All right, good evening, everybody. It's about that time to get started. This is the January Regular Planning Commission and also the Planning Commission's annual meeting at the same time. It's first meeting of each of each January. And I'd like to welcome everybody. And I'd like to call our 2022 January 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. And ask Jessica to do roll call, please.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Bill Chansler.
Here.
Jana Jagger.
Here.
Matt Lozenby.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Bob Brittenbach.
All right, good time, thank you. Okay, before we start, just real quickly, I'll just kind of go over what you're going to be to expect here tonight. We'll be presented with a few agenda items. We have quite a short agenda tonight. And a representative for each item from the city staff will present the item. The representative that is bringing the item to the commission will have an opportunity to have anything they want to say at that time. And once we're done with the presentations, then we'll open the public hearing if it's appropriate. Some require public hearings, some don't. And when it is time to come up for a public hearing, that's when you can come forward and speak on any on the issue at hand. We want everybody to be heard, and we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. Once everybody has spoken, we'll close the public hearing. We'll have maybe some questions on clarification, and then we will open the commission will make a motion in a second, and we will discuss the motion and have a vote. The commission is will vote based on state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan, and for the general good of the community. Another thing that we're responsible for is subdivision plats. I'd like to just give you a little summary of our role there. By Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission, like ours, is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. So with regards to these plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations that are contained in state laws. The zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations have previously been adopted. While we'll have hearings on most plats, and we welcome everybody's comments and time to come up and have and speak their mind, please understand that it is the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements that are codified in those laws and regulations. Finally, I'd also like to make a point that other than subdivision plats, everything that we recommend here is a recommendation of the city council. There'll be another time that you can speak to the city council at a later date. So the first item of business is citizens' communication. In this particular time, this is for anybody that would like to come up and speak about. There's two different categories. One is anything on the consent agenda, and then anything on your mind that's not otherwise on the on our business for tonight. So on the consent agenda, we have two items. Both are annexations. One is the McWhorter Properties, which is PL 2021-00852. And the second one is the Henry Property, which is PL 2021-00858. Would anybody like to come up and speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move on. There is no old business. We will move now to the consent agenda. And the staff have any presentation they'd like to make on that, anything to say, please? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion from the commission.
I'm looking to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the packet and the regular meetings.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to new business. The first item in new business is a preliminary plat, the McWhorter Properties, Society Hill Estates. This is PL 2021-00855. Mr. Kip.
Good evening, commissioners. The request before you is for a preliminary plat approval of a 14-lot conventional subdivision located near the intersection of Society Hill Road and Moores Mill Road on the southeastern periphery of the city limits. The property is owned by McWhorter Properties Society Hill Estates, LLC, and they are represented by Barrett Simpson Incorporated. The property is a little over 48 acres. They're requesting to subdivide into 14 lots, each lot being around three acres or larger for residential development. The preliminary plat meets or exceeds the requirements of the subdivision regulations. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with staff conditions. There is one condition that was in your packet. Planning condition number two, we'd like to strike that from the conditions as the applicant will provide a public access point. Other than that, happy to answer any questions.
So would that be something we have to make a condition, that they bring that in?
You can strike it from the if you recommend approval, just strike it from the condition.
Strike it completely.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, I know there's reason, what is the reason?
They're providing an alternative to it.
They are providing?
Yes, sir. It'll be a public.
That's what I was kind of getting at, is do we need to?
Go back.
During the presentation on Tuesday, it was Monday, I guess.
Monday.
I made mention of it during our meeting, that they were going to provide access from Society Hill Road as opposed to internally between two lots.
But my point would be, do we need to make that specifically a condition, or is that something that can be dealt with later?
No, I think a recommendation for approval tonight can be with all staff's conditions minus planning condition number two.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't see Mr. Rice. Is there anybody that would like to?
I'm here for him.
Oh, Mr. Connor, okay.
Yeah, I'm here for him, so if y'all have any questions, I would love to answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, but ask anybody that'd like to come speak on it, please do come forward and sign in on the side here. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And move on to, are there any basic questions for clarification at this time, or should we have a motion?
I'm looking to approve PL 2021-00855. With staff comments. At conditions.
Accept.
Accept.
Accept, number two.
All right.
Second.
No, we have a good motion, okay. Any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is item number four. It's also a preliminary plat for the Ashton Glen subdivision, PL 2021-00857. Mr. Howell.
Yes, commissioners, okay. So preliminary plat requests, it's a 21-lot performance residential subdivision on 67, a little over 67 and a half acres. It's located in the north of town in the CDD district, just east of Ashton Lakes and south of Farmville Lakes. And 280 is immediately north of it. You have a lot of property in the, a lot of property in the county to the south and to the north. It's a two-sheet subdivision. So this, the majority of the property, approximately 86% of it is in floodplain and will constitute the subdivision's required open space area. And that's what this area shows. The line in green is a greenway easement. It's a 30-foot greenway easement that they are going to provide for the city's greenway plan. The properties themselves will consist of 19 units. One item of note is the future land use. Does have a future park designated at the intersection of Sagahatchee Creek, where it goes underneath the highway. The applicant is aware of that. They will work with us over the course of time to figure out what the best way to best way to convey that or whatever appropriate arrangement that should be. We have had some, staff does recommend approval with conditions. We have had some correspondence from the neighbors from Ashton Lakes. One specific, one in particular was had some questions about or concerns about driveway spacing off 280, as well as the Ashton Lakes sign and then the trees to the subdivision itself. But driveway spacing off 280 is not an issue. The Ashton Lakes tree, uh, sign will be preserved in some arrangement, and then the trees will be a function of their own construction. But the green, the open space will remain undisturbed, so.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff?
This is, it's a different Mr. Connor, isn't it? That's the representative? Okay. And I do not see.
The applicant's.
Is he here? Oh, would you like to speak, or?
Just here to answer questions.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, this also requires a public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing at this time. Anybody like to come forward and speak on this, please do? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And any questions for clarification or motion?
I do have a question, should I wait for discussion? Question about, are there any particular conditions that are more, you know, heavier than some of the others? I understand the park, but the, this is preliminary, so with lot one, when we get to final plat, that sign and easement and all that will have been taken care of. I just didn't see that as one of the conditions.
The sign.
Go ahead.
The sign itself exists on a current easement that's already there and is represented as such on the plat that you see in front of you. During DRT, we will discuss with the applicant what the, if there's a better appropriate way to make that arrangement. So it might be different when it comes before you for final, but as it is currently, that's how it's represented now.
Motion?
Looking to approve 2021-00857 with staff conditions, second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to item number five, which is a appeal to a waiver denial for the tracks. This is PL 2021-00861. Ms. Frazier.
Nonette Reese will be recusing.
Thank you. What's before you is a deceleration lane waiver appeal. I think you received a letter today from the applicant who's unable to be here this evening. The supporting information is in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And this does not require a public hearings. Anybody received the letter from the representative? Unless there's any questions for clarification or looking for a motion.
Make a motion and then have discussion about it?
Absolutely.
I mean, I do think it deserves some discussion.
Absolutely.
Especially since the applicant's not here to speak. Move to, I don't even know, approve the appeal? Is that the proper wording? Approve the appeal of the denial. Grant the waiver. I will second that.
Discussion.
And I apologize for not being here at the packet meeting, so I don't know how much discussion there was at the packet meeting. And I appreciate Parker Lewis sending this letter to us so we can hear his take on the situation. He always does a very good job of explaining his position to us, so I hate that he cannot be here in person, but I think the argument for board is a fair one. I've traveled down that road a good bit. Not recently, because I'm not really a college student anymore, so I don't need to go down that road very much anymore. But I did live down there at one point in time, and I mean, it is, it's a narrow road and it's a low, lower speed limit. I think with our new design standards that we put in place down there that are, seem to be driving that more towards an urban feel, a deceleration might be unnecessary. To me, a deceleration is to keep you out of the way of traffic that you do not want to slow down for any reason, for your safety and for the safety of the people coming in behind you. I just don't feel like that a deceleration at this point is necessary, especially on the side of the road this project is on and the number of cars that are going to be going, going past it. So I think it's a little bit of an undue burden.
How is this classified? How's this road classified? Arterial, or is it a?
I think it's a collector.
Collector?
It's a collector. And at some points of land, a collector designation might be appropriate. I don't know that it, at that far end of it.
Well, it is designated as a collector, and I drove that stretch yesterday. It is a long stretch. This is the first, if you, this is at the very beginning of that long stretch of narrow roads, which we expect to see more development like this one. Granted, at this moment, I don't think that the, how many units did he say? Isn't it 75 beds? 75 cars coming and going over the course of a day would, would be a real problem. But as that develops further down, and if there are no expectations of, of deceleration lanes, through all the development that will take place over time there, we're going to have a bottleneck, I think. So if we're gonna, if we don't do it now, we've sort of opened the gate for, for the future, it's right at the head of the, head of the stream, if you will.
And I might respectfully disagree with that, because I do think that, and I understand your, your position on that, but I do think that we look at these appeals and the waivers, the staff looks at the waivers on a case-by-case basis, and we don't know what will be developed down there, so, you know.
I think we have a pretty good idea.
Well, we cannot know with certainty.
It's not going to be low-dance residential.
And I don't, I think it's unfair to put that burden on this project because of what might happen for somebody else's project in the future. And I think as a board, we are educated enough to be able to make those determinations on a project-by-project basis. If I could, I'm sorry, Bob, would you like to go ahead?
Well, I'd like to add that, first of all, not surprisingly, Mr. Lewis wrote a very strong and intelligent letter. The problem I have with the letter is that there's no guarantee that it's always going to be 25 miles per hour. There's no guarantee there will always be parking there. There's, there's already some places where it was built before we had this guideline that there should be, there should be a right-turn lane probably already for some larger, at least one larger development that isn't there because it was built before we had this policy. So we can't predict the future. I sort of go back, I think Warren's point's good, well-taken. We, we, we're deciding now on the long term for that road. And really, whether it's East Glen or West Glen, there are a number of places, unfortunately, where we should have turn lanes, deceleration lanes, and we don't because if they were, they were, the facility, the, the construction was preceded the ordinance or the guideline. So we've got, at some point, we have to be, face reality that this is a burgeoning city of 100,000 soon and more so, and we need, we need good policy on traffic safety. And I think this is a step in the right direction. Yeah, so that's my two cents.
Is there a photo that we can look? I'm sorry. I just want to have, while we're talking, I'd like to see, there we go, thanks.
I think, I always have to say, I have the utmost respect for all of our staff, especially Allison, and I hate to ever have it presumed that I think I know better, and I don't. However, we have gone to great painstaking lengths to create urban core design standards to make this an urban pedestrian-friendly area. And I think that the sidewalks and, and the width of those is far more important than this deceleration lane, which according to Parker would be the only one of its kind in the entire urban core if we deny this, because it's going into a driveway. And so I don't think we know what's going to happen. Yes, we can presume that the development is going to continue, but we have set standards that are 100% aimed at creating a pedestrian urban core. And so to decrease the amount of space we have there, I don't think is any less important than what may happen however many years from now. And I don't think it's fair to punish the first person who comes in and does it when it's not yet necessary.
I don't know if it's a point of, point of clarification, I'm not sure what the Robert Rolls of Order correct things are for this, but, so this letter dated January 13th, did we get this in an email prior, just prior to this, or?
We received it this afternoon. It might have been about 2:00, something like that.
2:00, okay, okay. The second question I have is that, is it, is it possible within our rules for this kind of agenda item for us to table it to a date certain, so Parker can be here in person, or is that not, with something else triggered, he can't do that?
You could certainly table. I think that in his email, which was actually sent to all of you, was it not? That, I think he may have made some mention there, and I'm not advocating for him, but I think he might have pointed out that they were hoping that this project would move forward.
I see.
Is that right? Do I see that?
Okay.
So I'm not telling you what to do, but, but I think he did.
We already have a motion on the floor.
Right, yeah.
Well, and I know they'll have to re-engineer the entire project, probably, so that will take some time for them, so I would imagine.
Is this actually part of Urban Core, which has?
This is the same project that we, that was part of the 15-foot ceiling wave. And so that, and the reason for that was because this area was included in that downtown design standards.
The zoning district is UNW?
Yeah.
But it is part of the, the general urban area.
Which kind of changed some of the design standards for that area at the time. One, to raise ceiling height requirements along the street, and two, to push the buildings closer to the street with wider sidewalks.
And I would like to clarify one thing. Robin, you mentioned, I think Mr. Lewis says this would be the only one. We had this situation come up recently on the Heart of Auburn project, and we required them to construct a deceleration lane on Gay Street on the backside. Obviously, there's no physical way to do it on the College Street side of that development, and they consented to build. So it's not the, the only case.
Okay.
It is a little unique to have.
Thank you.
The deceleration lanes in an urban core environment. So just wanted to clarify that.
I appreciate that. And my, my tolerance of approving the appeal would be that it's a, it's a narrow street with a, already a little bit slower speed limit, and, and it is because it is mostly populated with students. It is not very, very heavily traveled in that area.
What's the design standard that's driving this to begin with? And what's, what's making this the requirement?
So in 2018, we changed our deceleration lane and left-turn lane requirements in our design manuals to require them on all collectors and arterials. Prior to that time, the language was that they were required if a traffic signal warrant analysis said they were. So in 2018, the language was changed because, as, as Bob mentioned, we have situations and had situations where we were coming back as a city to build infrastructure, particularly deceleration lanes for developments that didn't have them, at the city's expense. So the change was to help preserve the capacity and integrity of our major roadways, collectors and arterials, maybe not for today's traffic, but definitely for traffic that's in the future.
Okay. And have we not, Allison, in some times past, where the warrant wasn't there yet for a turn lane, we've asked them to, to design the project so that the easement could be, the right-of-way could be obtained when it was needed?
Yes, we have done that in the past.
And they just don't build it? The city would take on the cost of building it, but they would have the land. Once this is built, it'll never be.
Correct. Not based on how the buildings are situated currently. Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second to, let's make sure I get the words right.
Approve the appeal.
Approve the appeal. Okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
Oh.
All right, let's have a voice vote on that, please.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Bill Chansler.
No.
Jana Jagger.
Yes.
Matt Lozenby. Marcus Marshall.
No.
Warren McCord.
No.
Nonette Reese.
Accused.
Bob Brittenbach.
No.
No.
Wendy Birmingham?
No.
Okay, the motion, because the motion fails. Okay. On to the next item is other business. That's the end of our regular meeting, and for other business, we're basically going to have some time to elect officers for the next, this next year. And the officers that we're electing are the chairman of the planning commission, the vice chairman, and the secretary. And there's a little bit on the screen about what each of these are supposed to do. And so to start with, the way I'm going to handle this is just by having nominations from the floor for each of them, and then we'll vote depending on, you know, how many nominations we have. So the first office is for chairman, so I'm going to open the nominations for chairman.
I don't mind making a nomination first. I'd like to make a suggestion. Since the current chairman is going to be serving about one more half-year before he leaves the commission, and if he were willing to serve, and if the other two officers are willing to serve until that time, then perhaps my, my nomination would be for all three officers to continue to serve until such time as the chairman leaves the commission. And at that point, we would elect officers for, for, perhaps we'd need all three, depending on where we are. So just, just a suggestion, not necessarily.
If we could put that in the form of a motion.
Well, I, I, I I guess, I guess the initial, assuming that you were willing to continue to serve.
Absolutely, yes.
And, and the vice chair, and I can speak for Mac, I know he would be willing to continue to serve as secretary, that.
Confirm that, too. I talked to him today.
The motion would be that the three current officers be re-elected for for the next term, although with you leaving the board mid, mid-year, we would obviously then have a reelection at that point.
Normal rules would be have another election.
Yeah.
Motion?
So I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, well, thank you. Now, we have one more thing at the very end, and it's about looking at our calendar for the year. As I recall, we had one potential issue on one date, and it had. Oh, September, well, there was two then, because there was spring break, too, in March.
But that didn't.
The change to the calendar is the September 6th. It used to say September 5th. So that's for Labor Day. And then there was a question among the group as to whether or not you wanted to change the dates in, for spring break, which I believe is the March.
Right, March 7th.
So staff did look at that. If you wanted to change the packet meeting and the planning commission regular meeting to just the same days, but the following week, that does not create any issues for us. In fact, we have some key.
Personally, I'm going to be the same vote, and I'm not going to be here there, so.
I'm not going to be here the following weeks.
Oh, really?
I won't be here the following week.
That's, well, there's two.
We're both going.
Yeah, that's going to be a little more of an issue, I guess, now that we've been voted in as, as officers. I would like to make a motion that we move that particular date to the week later.
Thought you just said you wouldn't.
We won't be there, so we want to make it, what is it, the 14th and the? Yeah, I think so. I'm pretty sure it is. I know city schools are that week. City school's the week of the 7th of March, and I'm pretty sure Auburn is, too, this time.
Okay, so instead of packet meeting on the 7th and regular meeting on the 10th, it would be the 14th and the 17th.
Is that okay with everybody? All right, do I, let's, let me just, I'll put it in the form of a motion. I moved to move that particular meeting one week later, both pack meeting and the planning commission meeting. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that brings us to the end. I have no communications, staff communications.
I do, thank you, sir. Just wanted to believe that this is Jessica's first meeting head of planning commission, and so Jessica Harmon is our new administrative assistant.
Hey, Jessica.
I love your emails. Thank you so much. I appreciate them as well.
We're glad, we are glad you're here.
We've seen a lot of them. Don't worry.